Good evening. Today is Monday, March 15th at 7:00 PM. And it's my pleasure to call this meeting together to order for the Goffstown School Board. If you would all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As this is the first meeting since our voting, we have to begin. I'd like to congratulate the board members who were re-elected. Thank you for your service on the school board. We'll begin with election of officers. And I will ask for nominations for Chair. To start, please. Retta?
I'd like to nominate Heather Traypas.
We have a nomination for Heather Traypas. Do we have any other nominations for Chair? Seeing none, we will be looking, Mr. Cludier, for a plurality of the vote. So all of those-
That would be accurate.
All those in support of Mrs. Traypas's Chair. And we'll do this as a roll call as we have a remote meeting and a board member on the phone. Terry Fisher?
Yes.
Retta Chaffee?
Yes.
Ellen Vermakowicz?
Yes.
Daniel Cludier?
Yes.
Jared Talbot?
No.
Ginny McKinnon?
Yes.
Heather Traypas?
Yes.
Okay. Congratulations, Heather. I will turn the meeting over to you.
Thank you, Brian, and thank you very much. Thank you, Dan.
And just, we don't have Janelle, right? I'm sorry. Okay.
No, she's not here tonight. So we need to elect a Vice Chair. Do I have a nomination for a Vice Chair? Go ahead, Ginny.
Buddy Chaffee.
Do I have a second? For Retta? By Terry? All right. Any other nomination? All right. Seeing none, I will do roll call. Terry?
Yes.
Retta?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. Thank you, Retta. Thank you, everybody. All right, so we need to approve the March 1st, 2021 public hearing minutes. Anybody see anything on this? Before we take a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the board minutes of March 1st, 2021.
Okay, thank you, Ellen. Do I have a second? By Retta? All right, I will do roll call. Terry?
Yes.
Retta?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Dan?
abstained. I was not in attendance.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Jared?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. We now need to approve Monday, March 1st, four minutes. Anybody see anything with those?
What was that?
I have no idea.
That was Dan's Captain on the Bridge signal.
Oh, okay.
Does anybody see anything before we take a motion? Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry.
I'll make a motion. Hold on. My first motion was for the minutes of the meeting, right?
No, that was for the hearing.
For the hearing. And this will be my motion to approve the minutes of March 1st, 2021 of the school board meeting.
Yes. All right. Do I have a second? By Ginny? All right, I'll do a roll call. Terry?
Yes.
Retta?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. All right, we're unanimous. Moving on to correspondence.
I'm not even going to see this.
Except I was supposed to say abstained. I got too excited. I wasn't in attendance.
All right, thank you, Dan. So you got that, Denise? You abstained? Okay, no correspondence. All right, commendations, good news? Anybody? Go ahead, Ginny.
The first thing I have is, I heard on WMUR that a young lady, this month is Women's History Month, and a young lady from Goffstown High School, Pat Williams.
Paxton.
Paxton. I'm sorry, Paxton Williams. Was recognized as an inspiration for Women's History Month. She's a young lady with cerebral palsy, and she will be graduating this June with honors. So she was recognized. It was very cool.
It was.
And she is an awesome young lady. I've had the good pleasure of knowing her since she was very, very young. And a wonderful family.
And from what I understand, there is some kind of fundraiser going on for a wheelchair van for their family, which is a very expensive undertaking. So if anyone is interested, that might be something to put your donations towards. Another thing, I'd like to make a commendation for all of the committees and all of our schools that worked on the presentation that was made to us last meeting. I know every school and all of staff members from each school and administrators got together and helped work on that presentation to pull the things together, to work towards Phase 3. So I just wanted to recognize them for the work that they helped you with on that.
Great. Thank you, Ginny.
Kudos to them for that hard work.
Absolutely. Go ahead, Ellen.
Yeah, I just want to ask, we're speaking with these Plexiglas things and through our masks, and it's difficult at times to hear lower-speaking people. So please speak out. These aren't microphones for us.
Okay.
But GTB. So if we could really try and make sure we're speaking up.
Okay, I have soft voice. I'm sorry. Thank you, Ellen. Any other commendations, good news? All right, seeing none. We'll go to public comments. Scott, is there anybody on the line?
I didn't see anybody. Let me just double-check again. No.
All right, so I do have, we do have someone here who would like to speak, and then I have some letters to write. So if you want to, do you want him that he has to come up?
Where did Caleb see?
Yeah, we can have him. I don't think Caleb's coming tonight, so he can sit next to Jared. We would have you start with your name and address for the record, please, sir.
Sure. My name is Kyle Franco. I live on 44 Janus Drive. I have two children currently at Maple Avenue. My background with the school system. I have one very simple request of our elected school board tonight. And that is to restore the public service taxpayers have been paying for. Set a 50% of the service at 100% of the cost. Before the school year began, the school sent out a survey to all parents. The survey came back overwhelmingly that our children should go back full-time across the board. Most of the board chose to ignore the citizens. Apparently, these board members know what's best for us all. Our children are currently in first and third grade. My son has only attended one full year of school since he started at Maple Ave. In three months, he will be a fourth grader, having spent essentially two grade-school years in school. So it's almost like he's missing an entire grade-school year of school. Sorry. I have high regards for my children's teachers, and they've done an outstanding job with my children. What has been really tough is trying to replicate this at home. Since I don't have a four-year teaching degree, I seem to be lacking a bit in this department. The following is a quote from the CDC's website. Although children can be infected with SARS-CoV-2, can get sick from COVID-19, and can spread the virus to others, less than 10% of COVID-19 in the United States has been among children and adolescents 5 to 17 years old. Compared with adults, children and adolescents who have COVID-19 are more commonly asymptomatic or have mild nonspecific symptoms. I'm reminding you tonight with an excerpt from the New Hampshire School Board Association that "The school's job is to provide my children with an adequate education, and the school board leadership should be focused on end results. The board should ask questions of what, why, how much, and how well. Board action should be focused on mission statements, goals-based outcomes, local board policies, academic standards, and sufficient communication with the community." And I'll tell you, it's kind of hard to have communication with you when you don't even allow people in your school. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I guess I'll watch the rest.
All right, so we have some letters of families that have requested they be read tonight. I also sent you a bunch of letters today of other families that just wanted you to know but didn't want their letters read in public. So the first letter is from Taylor Bean. He's a high school senior here. Says, "My name is Taylor Bean, and I am a current senior at Goffstown High School. In making your decision about the return to school at GHS, I ask you to consider the following. Throughout the past year, the lives of students and the education system as we know it has changed drastically. Our daily routine was completely shattered. In March of 2020, going to school every day became days spent on Zoom, learning remotely from home. With a fast pace and a difficult adjustment students were forced to make, we rose above it. We made the best of unprecedented and incredible unusual times. We adapted to remote learning and developed the use of new technologies. To say this was easy would be a major understatement. After finally getting a grasp on our new normal, students were thrown a new challenge of adapting to a hybrid model of learning. Students have had to find routines that work for them to be successful in their studies. Many classrooms have been flipped, leaving much of the student learning to be completed independently at home, coming to class with the basic understanding of the content and concepts. Adjusting to two in-person days and finding a balance that has worked for each individual has been key to the success of this model, in addition to the countless hours teachers have spent to provide the best education possible for their students in this new model of learning. As we have entered the third quarter of the school year, it feels as though students have finally adjusted and developed routines and schedules that work best for them to optimize productivity. Just as it seems we have adjusted to yet another new normal, ideas of another adjustment have taken rise. The thought of having to make this adjustment is incredibly overwhelming to many students. We have successfully made it through six months of hybrid learning, grasping a handle on new COVID-related protocols and precautions, navigating this process as we go. It seems as though a change to 100% in-person learning would hinder the progress students have made this far in the school year. By the time this learning model would be implemented, April would be upon us, leaving merely two months for students and teachers to adjust to this major change, reestablish routines, and continue making progress in their education. Myself, as well as many other students, agree that it would be in the best interest of the student body to finish out the school year in the current model of learning, which we have finally navigated and will only continue to improve with. Students are exhausted, as is, and a drastic change such as a full return to school will only hinder the motivation and productivity of students who are already hanging on their last thread. Additionally, three-foot social distancing raises great concerns about the number of students who would be required to quarantine after an exposure to COVID. While I agree that the research behind three-foot distancing does not appear to have a significant impact to the number of transmissions, it would drastically impact the number of students who would be required to quarantine. Currently, with six-foot social distancing, only few students are required to quarantine if a student tests positive with COVID. The classroom setups help limit the number of quarantines. Many students to this day have made it successfully without having to miss school and quarantine. However, with three-foot distancing, many more students would be required to quarantine if a student tests positive. Those who are required to quarantine in the current hybrid model only miss four days of in-person learning. However, with a full return, a student would miss up to 10 days of in-person learning, which may be detrimental to their learning and would put them very far behind. Ironically, in attempts to increase the amount of time students are spending at school, ultimately, it will cause many students to spend even less time in school as one positive case will cause a greater number of exposure within six feet, causing a greater number of students quarantining. Lastly, I would like to advocate for the teachers. Many teachers have put countless hours into creating lesson plans and adapting their classroom to hybrid learning. Teachers have worked tirelessly to ensure they are able to effectively cover required content in an unprecedented model of learning. A drastic change such as full return to school would completely change the lesson plans teachers have put time and effort into creating in order to provide the best possible learning for their students. We would be asking so much of our teachers to have to completely replan their lessons for the remainder of the school year. Classes are still able to cover the same amount of curriculum in a hybrid model as they are in full-person model. Even advanced placement AP teachers have been able to work off a tight schedule and create extension lesson plans, which have allowed for college boards' AP curriculum to be covered in full without any modifications to the AP test. This shows that the students' ability to progress in education and prepare for college is not being compromised. I ask you to consider the amount of changes the high school students have to overcome. We are working incredibly hard in uneasy circumstances. We have finally found a model that works for the time being, both for individual routines to enhance productivity as well as to minimize exposures to COVID and number of quarantines. A return to full school would hinder much of the success and hard work many students and teachers have put in to make it this far into the year in the midst of a global pandemic. Thank you for your time and consideration. All right, the second one is from Stephanie Hughes. Actually, from her daughter Emily Hughes. This email is sent, being sent by a Goffstown High School junior with major concerns about moving into Phase 3 of our COVID response plan. This isn't coming from a parent who wants to keep their kid busy and out of the house or a child who doesn't understand the extreme dangers of this pandemic. I am currently in the top 20 of my class, an AP student, a relatively intelligent person to summarize. Though hopefully, if you are not passively reading this email, you will comprehend it simply as if we were partaking in a table-side 1-on-1 chat. At the high school level, most of us just now adjusting to a hybrid setting. Many of us have found a rhythm and do our best to drum along, making the best of this abnormal year. I find that many of my teachers are over-assigning work. For example, posting work on a Saturday or giving us three-plus-hour at-home lessons. But we manage. As an involved performing arts student, having the ability to sing and choir, dance in Mo.co, and act in our winter musical is vital to my mental health and happiness. I desperately want to enter a career in music, and my clubs are of high importance to me as well. Peer outreach never fails to make me smile, and theater club feels like a second home. I enjoy the presence of most of my teachers and peers. The ability to see my best friend, who I've known since kindergarten, is something I've learned to cherish. And all of this is stripped from me and hundreds of other students if we move into Phase 3. Many students don't feel comfortable with three-feet distancing in full classrooms five days a week. It would turn our new abnormal upside down, and we'd have to instantly relearn how to function in a normal school setting. However, if we waded into the beginning of 2021, 2022 school year, we could ease into Phase 3 without all this added stress. If we loosen our restrictions, we can create cracks. Water can seep in, and soon enough, the whole place is flooded, and we'd be facing a crisis. We could face the possibility of moving fully remote for everyone, and that would be even more detrimental to our education and mental health than Phase 3 will ever be. The thought of breaking our already fully functioning system invokes fear into my mind and many others. If we move into Phase 3, I will be forced to move into the online academy and lose so many things I appreciate about the school and community. And no, my parents are not the ones forcing me. I would force myself to trudge through the rest of junior year because I wouldn't feel safe entering the building. Schools are supposed to be safe environments for children of all ages. By moving into Phase 3, we are stripping students of that safety. It is imperative that you prioritize safety over normalcy. Failing to do this will simply result in disaster. Thank you for taking the time to read this email of concern. Emily Hughes. The next one is from Deanna Brown. Says, "Good afternoon, Heather. I am writing today to share my concerns with you regarding Phase 3 reopening at the elementary school level. My daughter is currently a fourth grader at Maple Avenue, attending two days a week with a smaller class size of 10 combined. For my daughter, COVID has in some ways been a blessing. You see, my daughter currently has a 504, and this year, due to a smaller class size, is finally thriving in Mrs. Mordecai's classroom. While I understand that five days in school learning is the best for children, I would really like for you to take into consideration how some of these children adjust. For some, it is quick, as children are resilient, but for others, it can be a real challenge. With COVID last year and the forced close of the school, my daughter struggled tremendously. This year, we knew what direction we were headed in, which made the transition easier. Here we are with three months left of the school year. She has adjusted well to the smaller classroom requirements. She has adjusted well to the schedule and expectations both in and out of school, and I am deeply concerned that if we switch to a full five days, how this schedule will impact her ability to learn, and she is a child that struggles with change. These children have struggled and faced so many challenges already this year. I think we should continue the way we have been and allow them to thrive within their current school setting versus adding yet another change to get used to for the next three months. While I understand that my child is only one out of hundreds, I feel it is necessary to advocate for her and want to express my concerns to you. I truly appreciate you taking the time to read and hear my thoughts. I have faith that the school board will take all concerns into consideration when choosing which direction we should move forward in. Kindly, Denise Brown." And the last one is from Oscar Arvallo. I hope I said your name right. Says, "Hi, Denise. Thank you for serving on the board. I would like to voice my concern over switching the kids back to five days in person. I do not feel that it is a wise decision with such little time left to the school year. If the schools can do this without disruption and with proper precautions to the COVID virus, it would be more plattable. As it stands, we live in a state where people tend to not take the virus seriously enough. Thank you, Oscar." So those are the four letters that were requested to be read tonight. I thank everybody for responding or sending emails to us. We like to hear from our community. We will discuss Phase 3 later tonight on the agenda. So is there any other public comments? Scott, we're good still?
Yep, we're still good.
All right, so I'm going to close public comments. So we have a presentation from Megan. Guys should receive this.
And Mr. Gross, do you want to make the important announcement?
Sure, but it's also part of-
I know, but-
Yeah, so all of the hard work that was done for the last year in terms of remote meals and has really, it's just been astonishing. And Megan and her crew have just really gone above and beyond in terms of making sure that all of our students were adequately fed over the last year. And with that, Megan and her folks got just great recognition in terms of, from the USDA, in terms of being an exemplar in the state of New Hampshire for all of those efforts. So Megan's going to cover some of all of that, all that she's done in terms of those meals in this presentation. But I think, on behalf of everybody here, Megan, we thank you. And your team were just going above and beyond since this pandemic started. I know that it means so much to the families in the greater Goffstown and New Boston community. So thank you. And I'll give you a clap.
And Megan doesn't take praise well, so it's important for us to recognize the incredible leadership. And we talk about leadership being mission-driven, and that's Megan Bizarro. She is mission-driven. She is committed to making sure that our families are fed, our kids are taken care of. Our kids that experience food insecurity have really just benefited from Megan's leadership. So, sorry to surprise you with this, Megan, but I couldn't be more proud of you or your team. So thank you.
Thank you. And the team is, when I got the letter, I went out and I read it to the high school staff, and they all stood a little taller and felt it really- high school staff, and they all stood a little taller and felt it really has been a wonderful morale boost, without a doubt. So we'll just jump right in to this now. We can, there's a couple of pictures on that first one with assembly and some of the food items that we serve remotely as well as in the classroom. So, all right, so you can jump ahead. You can go right past this one.
So again, this is a recognition from the United States Department of Agriculture. No small thing.
So currently, we are a national school lunch and breakfast program, but we are currently operating under what's called SSO, which is Seamless Summer Operations. And we've been operating that way since April, when we first started with remote meals. And this allows us to access all of the waivers from USDA so everyone can eat for free for breakfast and for lunch. And just like your educators, we actually have two processes, if you will, two ways we feed kids. We feed them onsite and remotely. The remotely is also reflective of the RSA where you have to make a meal available to a student. And with the onsite system that we have, we've actually flipped everything completely. The high school is now a central kitchen for Maple and Bartlett for two reasons. Number one, coming back in a hybrid situation, we had very low numbers in Bartlett and Maple, and also to try and keep everybody safe. Those kitchens are extremely small. The cafeterias were needed for other things in terms of space for setting up. So using the high school as kind of a central place made a lot of sense. Mountain View is onsite, doing its own kind of thing, and all students preorder for lunch at all levels, using our Nutrislice app or through the website. It's worked pretty well. If a student or a parent forgets, it's okay. They can email me. They can call our hotline. Or we do have enough supplies at the middle, at the elementary schools to do a yogurt meal real quick. Or at middle and high school, we give them a sandwich meal. So we do, we have allowed for people to forget. At Maple, Bartlett, and Mountain View, everyone's eating, dining in their classrooms. So it's classroom delivery, which is done either a combination of food service and the Mountain View, the administrative team has really become part of our food service staff because they've been our delivery to the classroom. So we've been very grateful for that. The high school students, we started doing delivery, but then we quickly moved to come on down to the cafeteria, grab your meal, and head back to either your classroom or the hallway to nowhere, or if it's really nice, they go outside. So they've got some, a little bit more freedom, but they do do a good job staying six feet apart. The elementary students also preorder breakfast because they pick it, they, we deliver it directly to the classrooms. With our remote feeding, our other model is, we have actually four meal packages parents can choose from because of all of the different configurations students are in for their learning, onsite learning. We have a five-day, a three-day, a two-day, and a one-day. And we do get orders for all packages pretty much every week. And we give out, we just finished this, just before I came here, we finished distributing meals today. So that's Mondays from five to six. And again, we do ask that they preorder either through Nutrislice or they can call the hotline. And again, this is available to any children in Goffstown from 18 to two years old. So what's been kind of really nice is that we've been able to service Glen Lake students. And we don't, in a pre-COVID, we didn't. So we've actually been able, and they've had some, we, it's worked out very, very well that way. And if you can go to the, we have a series of pictures. This is how our elementary works. We get a ticket that's printed out from our printer up above the, it gives us the teacher, the student, their lunch number, all of that. Then we fill our, what we call our chicken boxes. They're small, white boxes here at the high school with all the cold items. So we're shipping our items cold. So for example, if it's chicken tenders, the finishing school, Bartlett or Maple, will cook it off, put it into an aluminum foil, and slip it right into that box just before delivery. And you'll see up top is our, actually one of our very popular ones, it's our Pizza Munchable. And now, and we've gotten to be very good packagers. We buy a lot of little bags from Uline now that go through the little zip thing. So that's a very popular one. And then the one down below, you'll see the head cook Cindy Torres at Maple and Michelle McVeigh. That is, they, that was just for the picture. Normally, they're farther apart, but they're about four feet probably there. And that's the delivery. They take the boxes out of the black container that we did purchase and put it right into the fridge. So this process been signed off by the health inspector. Just so you know, we have kind of taken that step to make sure that everything was in line in terms of temperature and making sure the food is safe. We can flip to the next one. This is the similar thing here for Mountain View. Same type of box, we fill it. And then on the far right, you'll see two stands there, and we sort it by homeroom, by grade. So it's a little bit more time-consuming on the sort part because not, like the seventh and eighth graders, they have a seventh, eighth grade lunch and then a seventh, eighth grade lunch. So there's a little bit more to it, but those roll right into our walk-in once they're filled. So again, we keep everything as cold as possible as we can. And then the last one is just our remote feeding. The left is our five-day bags. Basically, think of your typical brown grocery bag, and that's full. And then the top picture is our staff filling our three-day bags, and those are like a t-shirt plastic bag. And then that's just a sample of a salad meal that we would have put out. And then, there they are, ready to hand out. And people just drive, people have been wonderful. It's been really wonderful with the community. People are grateful and thankful and super, super nice. And we're ready for the next. And so what does this mean in terms of numbers? Well, it's all really great, but it doesn't compare to a normal year as in any shape or form. Since April of 2020, when we started remote meals, we've done almost 80,000 meals that way. Packaging, timing, refrigeration, the summer. We've helped out New Boston for a while as well. So that's, that's a lot of meals to do in a totally different way. Below gives you information on how we're doing onsite as compared to last year. You'll see that breakfast is down 67% and lunch is down 78%. So the hybrid is doing what we thought it would do in terms of participation. We anticipated it to be quite a drop. The high school unfortunately has been a much more, much bigger drop than we thought. But in some ways, that's okay because it allows us to, some freedom because, I will tell you, remote has been higher than I thought it would be. So we've done a little seesaw with that. Okay? And à la carte sales, that's a 96% decrease because we're not selling à la carte except for our vending machines because we don't have students coming through the cafeteria lines. Everything is pre-made. They come and grab their meal and they go. And we knew that going in. We knew that that was going to be something we, we just were never going to recover. Okay? All right. So we did do some expense reductions as much as we could. Labor took the brunt of it. We decreased staffing hours by 55 hours a day. We laid off 10 employees and did not fill four positions. We did maintain our district leadership and key full-time personnel because we needed, we needed those leaders to make this work. And they've done just that and more. Food, we've been maximizing what we call our DOD, our Department of Defense Produce Program. That's where we take some of our entitlement dollars and basically do a shift over to that program through the state, and we get, we can order produce there. And we've been, I've been, normally, we're, we have more choice. We might have grapes on and some apple slices, and the apple slices came from DOD. And it's not cash out of our pocket. The grapes were. Now we don't have the grapes. We have the apple slices. So we're trying to streamline that to, to keep our costs low. So, and that translates into some less choices. And the online ordering, we have customized to a certain extent so that we can minimize waste in the classroom, minimize waste in our budget, because if they don't want the raisins, we're not, we would rather not bring it to them. Or if they don't want the peppers, we would rather not bring that to them. But we do, at least for our menu, we try to make it really easy in terms of, if we're having chicken tenders and fries, we do put the fruit with it so that then it's a complete meal and we cover our minimum bases in case the students, like, don't want the other options. So we've tried to kind of just split it a little bit to give some, but we also have to make it work for our staff. So if we give too much customization, it will fall apart. So Laura Taylor, our Assistant Business Administrator, myself and Scott have put together some projections for you to consider. It's, you'll see, we've broken it down by reimbursement and cash sales, just like we did last year when we shared with you projections and our expenses with salaries, benefits, food, and other. We're looking at a low estimate of a loss of approximately $300,000 and a high estimate of $329,000. So unfortunately, it's a fairly large number, but as Scott and I were talking, when you compare it, this is over the year. When you compare it to last year, which was over a much shorter period of time and it was in excess of $200,000, it might not be so bad.
Yeah, and I have to jump in here.
Yep.
Yes, $300,000 is, is it, is it a good chunk of money? It's a shortfall. But if you take a look at what Megan has kind of done in terms of all, the entire operation in terms of having more or less a commissary-type kitchen here at Goffstown High School, the menu selections, all of the streamlining that she's done, we've, I think she's done an excellent job in keeping that number as kind of low as it is. I mean, we're still, most of our full-timers take benefits. These are the same people that are key. They're the ones who prepare, who are the head cooks, et cetera. So we had, if you recall, last year, we had a $205,000-ish need to help food service, and now we're looking at around $300,000 for the entire year. So it's bad, don't get me wrong, but all things considered, how we have fed all of these folks. So again, free meals, you know, from the entire year, I just think it's part of, of doing business, shall I say. And most, as you can see from her slides, à la carte sales alone, they very much support our food service program. When you take that out of the equation, that's almost $200,000 that you have taken out of the equation. So it's not surprising. And I actually, I was, I was more nervous, I thought it was going to be closer to four. I did. And then when we, when we crunched the numbers, it's going to be my recommendation, and at a subsequent school board meeting, I will give you an early fund balance projection for us, but it would be my recommendation that the board consider a $300,000 fund transfer from the general fund to the food service fund. And then if, if that amount ends up being higher, then Megan has about 105,000, I think it's 105, in terms of fund balance. We'll use some of the fund balance. If it's a little bit lower, her fund balance will then, you know, grow by that, by that amount. But that would be my recommendation from a VA perspective. And I can't thank Megan enough for all that she's done because with everything going on, food service has been critical, you know, to us. And it's so nice to have a leader who you can just let, let run, run the operation.
I will add that there are very, I can probably count on one hand, the amount of districts are going to even break even this year. The ones that probably are, are, have been full in, regular, everything. They had enough space in their buildings to be full in, and they've been doing everything that they normally do. But most, I would say 90% of the districts are going to have to figure out something for their food service because they're all just, we're all in the same boat. I know, for example, Portsmouth High School, they're doing split sessions. So they've got kids coming in the morning and then kids coming in the afternoon. So sales are pretty non-existent there. Exeter, I know, has, has done a lot of layoffs as well, similar to us. So we're not alone in terms of food service and, you know, well, what are, what are other people doing? Well, they're doing about the same as we are. So.
Thank you, Megan. Jared had a question.
Megan, I just, no statement, statement. Megan, I'd like to thank you and your team for the service that you're providing. There's countless times I've talked with members within my, just in my area, that are going to the high school to pick up their food service delivery, and they cannot say enough about the service that you're delivering to them. So I'd like to thank you and pass that on to your, your group as well.
I will.
And a request from some of our littles, as I call them. They love to have the smiley french fries.
Oh, okay.
So just wanted to pass that along to you because I hear it from them all the time.
Good timing because I'm working on the next menu. So we will get that on. So thank you.
Megan, we would be remiss if we didn't mention chocolate milk for Mr. Cloutier. So we should probably add that in as well.
It's available and it's tasty.
It is, Dan. I have it every day. Ellen, I saw your hand up.
Yeah, just for clarity in my own mind, page five at the bottom, projected financials. The first column of numbers is what? Oh, is that the budget?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. And the second column is the low estimate projection, and the third column is the high estimate projection.
Almost like best, worst case.
Okay. The meals that were, we've been providing, the families who can pay, pay for it?
No, all these meals are free.
These are all free?
To anyone who's in, and, you know, one of the things that I think, I think for some of my staff, it's been a shift in their thinking of, what is the definition of need? Need in this, in pandemic life, need is not necessarily financial. Need is, I have to work, we're all home, oh, good, we can go get this. It's easy meals for my kid to, to make themselves. So that is a need that's out there. And I, and for a lot of folks, that's a shift in how you think about what need actually is. And honestly, I think a lot of the families are coming. It's convenient. It's stretching their food dollar because the groceries are going up. It just, it works. And there's that social emotional piece for kids. I have had some parents say, oh, when we bring them, Dan, you'll appreciate this, when we bring up that chocolate milk carton, it helps their kiddos reset that they're, yep, today is a school day even though I'm home because I'm getting my carton of milk. And you don't think about that when, I mean, I've been doing this over 25 years, and you don't think about that until you hear that from a parent, and you just kind of go, wow. It counts. It matters. And it's been great. Kind of, for me, it's been kind of a nice, not that the pandemic is great, but it's been a nice reset to get that kind of feedback. Yes, Rhonda?
Just as a follow-up to that, because I think it, I was really amazed that the school district did that right from the beginning because I think there were so many other issues to be concerned about. Are other schools, districts doing this? Of those 90% that are finding themselves, are they, are they all offering free meals?
They're all offering it in different ways. Some offer it in the middle of the day. For example, my kids attend Lennon Dairy, and they offer it like from 11:30 to 12:30 as a pickup. I live in Hooksett, so that doesn't work for me. But I think we're actually one of the few that actually offer it from five to six as a one-time pickup. And what's interesting is we provide, we hit about, just close to 200 kids every Monday in the summer. And when we first started, we were doing an 11 to 12 pickup, and we wouldn't necessarily get, we might get 150, 175. We actually have better participation because-
because we realized we need to go when the parents are, can pick up. This needs to work for our families. And, you know, so some, some schools are doing middle of the day. Some schools are doing bus drops as well. They bring them to the kids' homes. Some of them do line drops. Um, but that's a huge, and I think that's mostly the schools who are not in session, like when Concord wasn't or Nashua wasn't. Um, so, but it's kind of all over the map.
Thank you. Ellen, go ahead.
Just financially, um, can we use grant money to offset this instead of using a budgeted fund?
As of now, the answer to that is no. Um, we're waiting from guidance. So, as you know, we had ESER I and those funds are expended. We are soon to be getting guidance from the state on ESER II, but we haven't gotten that yet. And that's still up in the air, whether or not you can assist your food service program. And then, there's going to be, as part of the stimulus package, let's call it hypothetically ESER III. That one, I think you might be able to. But again, we don't, without guidance from the, from the feds and the state, my answer would be no at this point. Okay?
Because this certainly was done in response to the circumstances.
Correct. But there has been the way, it all depends upon how the legislation, you know, is worded.
Okay.
And the guidance that you get, you know, from the state. So, at this, in the absence of having any guidance, I would say we probably, and we might not get that guidance before the end of the year. So, my recommendation would be, you know, a $300,000, uh, transfer into the food service fund. And I'll, at the next meeting, when I go over, uh, fund balance, I'll, I'll show you. I can tell you right now, we, we did get a premium holiday from Health Trust due to COVID. And there was over 200 and something thousand, I think it was low 220s, I think. So, the vast majority of it's going to come from a, a whole slew of health insurance lines would, would cover the bulk of this.
Thank you, Scott. Does anybody have any questions for Megan?
I, I have one if I may.
Go ahead, Dan.
Go ahead, Dan.
I am looking at the, the estimates for cash sales and also food expenses. What are some of the parameters that were used for those deltas?
Um, well, the cash sales is, um, is a combination of things that make up that number. Part of that is the reimbursement we receive from New Boston. Um, part of that is, um, some of the vending sales. Part of that is we catered for the, the town. And then, some of it is some, some adult sales. We wrap all that into that cash sale. So, it doesn't really tie to the food cost. Is, if that's what you're asking?
Well, actually, what I'm asking is, there's a $5,000 difference in cash sales. So, what do you feel? Like, there's a certain amount of food items you're not going to sell because kids aren't in school or kids aren't buying? Or it's increased because you think you're going to sell more? Why do you believe there's going to be a delta there?
Um, well, we're-
It could be.
If we open up.
If we, it depends upon if we open, how, how many kids come back, that type of thing. We're just trying to put in some, some estimate there based on what we've seen for deposits so far this year.
So, so if I could ask, Dan, there, there, if schools are open for more days for the balance of the year, we would anticipate more cash sales, uh, either for staff or students.
Okay, that's, that's what I was thinking. And if that were the case, wouldn't the hot, wouldn't the food cost of 170,000 be on the left or the middle column, 160 be on the right column? Only because it should match up with the cash sales amount? Because I, I would-
Not necessarily. I don't think so, Dan, because what we're also figuring is that if school were open for more days, we would have to produce more food. Therefore, our food expenses would go up slightly. Not a whole lot, but slightly.
Right. Well, I would agree. I would agree. But is, isn't that like the 25,000 versus 20? More food cost? But it's the way the matrix is, it looks a little, it, it, the delta is, is less than about $30,000. So, it's not a big deal compared to the 300,000. But it, it, I just wanted to point it out because in my estimates, if I have more sales, my food costs more, not less.
No, um, not necessarily. And I, I think the big takeaway that I want the board and the public to know is that we believe that if school were open more days for the balance of the year, we would see a better overall financial picture for food service. And we're estimating it at probably 30,000. It could go a little better than that. But, um, but that's what we're, if, and if everything stayed status quo till the end of the year, then we'll probably, you know, looking at a, at a little bit of a worse situation.
Okay, thank you. The only last comment I want to make is, um, I want to thank Megan for what she does. And also, including those images, I'm not sure if they get shown to the public with slide five. In the third picture from the left, as with milk, it's chocolate milk. Good choice.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anything else for Megan before we make a motion?
The motion being what?
To transfer 300,000.
Looking as to do that today?
You don't have to.
I would, if I may.
At the next meeting, I, I'm going to, I'm going to talk to you about fund balance. You can do it at the next meeting. Um, but I'm, I'm telling you right now that, that the vast majority of it's going to come from the health insurance lines because that's where we saw that, uh, Health Trust savings. So, it's up to you. You want to do it, wait?
Dan, did you want to say something?
I did. I, I am not comfortable making a motion and voting yes on a motion in March for something that we're going to close closer to June. I mean, we haven't made any other decisions. We don't know what the high and low is going to be about. And for the auditors and our financial statement, there is no rush. And Scott, you can either confirm or say something different.
Yeah, I, I do think that we can wait and see if the picture, you know, improves. Um, but I, I do think that having a definitive number is easier than what we did last year. And I, and I talked to Megan and Laura about that. So, if, even if we want to hold off on this, what that fund transfer will look like until end of May, early June, I'm totally fine with that.
Okay.
And then, we can, but to then pick a number and then we just live with that number, whether it's 300,000, whether it's 275, three and a quarter, whatever that number is, um, I'm fine with that.
Okay. Jared, go ahead.
A follow-up?
Oh, sorry, Jared. Go ahead, Dan.
So, as a follow-up, what we can do is, we don't know if we have $300,000 to spend. And if we were to hit and transfer and make a motion for 300,000 and we find we have another big expense that comes up for some reason, we're going to have to cut the budget someplace else or I suppose we can reverse the transfer. But that's something else to consider.
Thank you, Dan. Go ahead, Jared.
Yeah, Scott, I guess, um, based on our current parameters, when do you expect to have a, be out of cash flow to support this?
Say this again?
When do you expect us to have a negative cash flow for our food services?
Well, first of all, at this point, there is no negative cash flow because everything kind of goes through one bank account and it's broken down by funds for accounting purposes. So, we don't have a food service cash flow problem. At the end of the fiscal year, if we did absolutely nothing, you would see that it would take, let's just say, the worst scenario, a $329,000 hit. Um, and then, that would be a problem. So, yes, that kind of reiterates what Dan said. Yes, you can wait until May or June to, to do this.
My, my follow-up would be, when we do present the information, if you could provide from a projected financial, actual costs as of a point in time-
Yeah.
-within the forecast, I think that would be, uh, just beneficial for us, for our discussions. Thank you.
Ellen, go ahead.
I know, I'd feel much better having more information with regard to using grant money on this as opposed to our tax, local property tax dollars raised. I'm not saying anything negative. I think this is awesome, what we've been able to do. Absolutely phenomenal, okay? But the paying for it, I really feel it should be coming out of a grant and not out of our tax raise budget. So, I would, I would feel much, if, if it's even available, any kind of information about the use of, of grant funding for it.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. Anything else for Megan? No? All right, thank you, Megan, so much for your presentation.
Thank you very much, your kind comments. I will be sure to pass it along to your amazing staff that you have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Megan.
Thank you, Megan. All right, moving on to finance report. Scott, manifest and vouchers?
Sure. Uh, tonight, you have a manifest in the amount of of which payroll, taxes and benefits are a little over $2,200,000, as you can see on your form. Uh, your special education activity is, uh, over $228,000. The lion's share of that is Durham School Services, which is sped transportation both in and out of district. And that number's a little bit higher than typical because, um, it's, uh, there were several months of out-of-district sped transportation in it. Uh, the other lines you've seen to the different providers, as you know, and I, I say the same thing when we go through this, uh, we've had to use vendors, contracted services due to the fact that we could not, we're not able to hire certain special education, whether it be teachers or therapists, et cetera. Uh, your general expenses total a little over $285,000, of which the largest one was your assessment to the SAU. Uh, then, the next two are your utilities, propane and oil to Dead River at a little over $44,000. I should tell you that our propane and oil expenditure this year has been a little bit higher than it has been in past years. Part of that is that, um, in terms to get airflow and circulation in the classrooms, windows have been open in the wintertime. And, um, so with that, we, we've, we've spent a little bit more on propane. Uh, and in terms of electricity, uh, we're, we're pretty good there with the exception of Glen Lake and the modular, which I mentioned in the last meeting. Uh, Gov Connection, uh, we have some Mountain View computer hardware there. Uh, and everything else is kind of, uh, what you might typically see. St. Anselm College was ice time for hockey. We did have to split that. St. A's closed down their ice rink in February. And we, you'll see, um, we went to West Side, not, I'm sorry, yeah, Manchester JFK and another arena. So, we kind of split it amongst three. And then, finally, Wilson Language. There was some curriculum materials at Mountain View. Are there any questions from the board?
Go ahead, Ellen.
I have one.
Hang on one second. Go ahead, Dan. Thanks, Ellen.
Okay, uh, Scott, uh, forgive me, but I wasn't here at the last meeting. Why wasn't the 224 payroll on the last meeting's manifest?
Um, what we've, I mean, we've been trying to pay things out, Dan, every, every week. And I'm not sure why that one, the timing might have hit where they did it on a Friday and your meeting was on a Monday. So, they didn't include it on the manifest. That's my recollection of it.
Okay. It, it came too fast.
Yeah, and we're, and we're kind of doing that-
It's administrative kind of thing.
It's administrative. And we're, we're paying Goffstown's bills every week and New Boston's for that matter. And it's been a really big help for us and, you know, to do that. So, I, I kind of, I like what we're doing in terms of that. The vendors are getting paid very timely and we're not seeing a lot of overlap in our bills, especially on utilities where, you know, they bill you, it's kind of like a credit card statement where you put, you put it in the mail, but yet it didn't register yet. So, um, but that's been a very big help for us.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Go ahead, Ellen.
Um, is the transportation, Scott, for Durham, is that one month?
No, it's multiple months. So, um, the in-district is one month. But then, there are multiple months of out-of-district. And, um, I will share with you, there was a reason why, um, we require from the state rosters of these kids for reimbursement through the government, uh, through the state. And the transportation provider was slow in getting those rosters to us. So, we didn't pay the bill until we got the rosters.
But this is special ed transportation?
Special ed transportation. So, we withheld payment until we got the information that we needed so that we could get reimbursement. So, then, when they finally gave us all of that data, then we paid them, I think it was four months of, of bills.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Um, and being a retired special ed teacher, I understand special ed. I don't need to hear what it's all about. And I'm not speaking about any individual or specific need. My concern is funding equity in general. We have what appears to be, it's, it's this one student, one month, paying for one student $120,000 a year plus transportation when we're only spending $5,000, $6,000, $7,000 a year for every other child in our school district. I understand needs are different. I understand this completely. Uh, and another student, $70,000 for one, for one student. I have long held that there is a real problem with how we're funding these things. And to think that this money, this amount of money goes for, can you imagine if we spent even a tenth of that for every single child in our district? I just, it bothers me greatly that, um, one, that we have children that have these many needs. And I understand that. Uh, it's nothing to do with them. To me, it's the cost and the expenditure that is borne so heavily by each individual school district. And I truly understand, you know, you get four or five situations in your district and it can be catastrophic. And I just feel that the, the funding mechanism for the, for these, the needs like this needs to be addressed and conquered sooner rather than later. And I know I'm speaking to the choir, but that just glared me right in the face when I saw that. So, that's my feel.
Yeah, so, I just want, for the board's knowledge and those in, who are watching, is that when you do have what we consider an expensive out-of-district-type placement, um, yes, we do pay upfront those pretty high costs. But then, on the back end, and Brian refreshed my memory, two and a half times, is that what it is?
Three. So, there's, we get what, Ellen, you'll recall what used to be called catastrophic aid.
Special ed aid.
It's now called special education aid. Um, first of all, she's right about funding. And I'd be happy to, um, get on top of the soapbox and speak more about that. But for, for very high-cost special education students, of which we have very few of them. But for, for very high-cost special education students, of which we have very few of them. Go, I go back over, over 10 years ago, our out-of-district lines were three times as high as they are now. But, so we spend three and a half times the state tuition average, and once you hit a certain threshold, we get 80% of that cost reimbursed to us. However, special education aid is routinely not paid at 100%. So the total amount that we should get through the algorithm, we routinely don't get that full amount. And once you hit another threshold, the entire cost is covered by the state. So once you get over, you know, probably over $100,000, then we get a full reimbursement for that.
And there is a bill, I believe, I was just reading it today, that reduces from 3.5% to 2.5%. And which, I did some calculating, just generic numbers, and that lessens the burden on the district, increases what the state pays for, but the district's paying for that percent upfront, up, not percent, I'm sorry, three and a half or two and a half times the tuition per regular ed. Right, okay. And then the state pays, supposed to pay 80% of balance of that cost. And then there's still another 20% that the district still has to pay. But if that were to pass, there'd be less of a burden, I believe, on the district. I just feel that.
I would have very little optimism that that bill will pass. There's no increase in revenue which would be needed for that to occur. So unfortunately, this is the perpetual cycle of New Hampshire not meeting its constitutional obligation to pay for an adequate education for all children in this state.
So I, I hear you, and I'll get on the soapbox with anybody about this. It's just not fair to, to the tax, any taxpayer or to any, any of our kids. So I'll leave it there.
Thank you, Ellen. Any other questions for Scott? Okay, see and none, we need to make a motion. Go ahead, Jenny.
I'll make the motion to accept the invoice for $2,826,902.20.
All right, do I have a second? Ellen, was that you? The second?
I'll second it.
All right, any other discussion? Okay, see and none, I'll do roll call. Terry?
Yes.
Rheta?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Jenny?
Yes.
And Heather, yes, we're unanimous. Okay, Scott, do you have budget transfers?
I don't. And I will share with you that keeping track of all of the ins and outs this particular year has been, you know, unbelievably daunting, especially with our, with COVID and all the nursing supplies, et cetera. So I'm looking at our budgets more from an account line and function lines than I am from like each individual. We have like 1,600 lines and trying to square them all away. We're at a point, if I did that, I'd be, I'd be doing like 10 budget transfers every school board meeting. So, so that being said, I will bring you bigger ones, but if it's a small one, as long as it's falling within our accounts and our functions, I'm kind of living with it at this point because there's just so many that are out there. So I don't have any tonight.
Okay.
The MS-22, which I believe our clerk signed off on tonight, that MS-22, you have a copy of that in your, in your packets. And that is essentially your adopted budget for the next school year, based upon the positive vote this past week. So both the school budget and the deposit into the capital reserve fund passed, that the, I know it's further along on the agenda. But that reflects, based upon a function perspective, where the money is being allocated. So, and by law, you have until the end of March to sign off on that. So it resembles identically what's been in your budget, all those 50, 60 pages, but it's, the state just requires it to be broken down by those, you know, dozen or so function lines.
All right. So we need to sign this at the end of the meeting?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. Anything else, Scott?
That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, Jared?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. For the Budget Committee, there has been no meetings as of this point in time. However, with the election occurring, there should be one this Thursday, though it is not on the town calendar. So I would like to recommend that we at least pass a motion or have a motion to have somebody attend a meeting, if one is called, before our next regularly scheduled meeting, whether it's me or another alternative. But I do recommend that we at least approve somebody to attend the Budget Committee meeting until we ratify all of our committee assignments.
Okay. Does anybody have a problem? Jared, are you considering being on Budget Committee again?
I'll, if somebody nominates me, I'll accept it. But again, it's up to the chair's.
I'll nominate Jared.
I'll second it.
It's up to the chair's discretion after that.
All right.
It doesn't actually have to be a nomination.
It's what you pick, and then I try to respect everybody's wishes. So is everybody okay with having Jared be there Thursday if we, if you have a meeting?
Yeah. And again, I would, I would word it to the next scheduled Budget Committee meeting or until our next successful school board meeting, whereupon we can ratify all of our committee assignments.
All right, sounds good. Somebody make that motion?
Actually, it's, it's not a motion. It's, I believe, the chair makes the assignments, and we never motion and accept it. We just accept it.
True, I just haven't gotten there yet. I mean, I have no problem having Jared sit on the Budget Committee.
Right, if you just say, hey, Jared, you want to continue to do that, he's still on that subcommittee, so.
Anybody else want that? All right, Jared, so you're on the Budget Committee definitely. Thank you.
If you can make it, let me know.
Anything else to report?
No. Well, the other thing is, just looking at the leadership from the last Budget Committee to this Budget Committee, there are no members from the prior leadership that are now on the Budget Committee Board. So just wanted to throw that out there, which may affect our space needs committee, because we might have to ask for them to send somebody new to the space needs committee from the Budget Committee as a representative. I will, again, I'll bring that up at our next Budget Committee meeting.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Dan.
It would also be appropriate, and you probably are already going to do this, but send an email to whomever is going to lead the Budget Committee, because it's going to, maybe if Jared had a letter in his hand, so officially it says he's appointed as the interim Budget Committee Rep from the school board, that then there would be no challenge at that meeting?
Okay.
And I believe that would go to Derek.
Derek Carr.
Yeah, at this point in time, until they, well, for the first meeting.
Sounds good. All right, thank you, Dan. All right, policy review, we have not met. We have a tentative point, meeting on April 12th, 2021, at 5:30, which would be a remote meeting, and I will let committee members know if we're meeting. C and E?
C and E's last meeting was canceled, and our next meeting is scheduled for April 12th at 7:00 p.m., and that will be a remote meeting.
Thank you.
May I ask why we're doing remote subcommittee meetings?
For what? Why are we doing a remote?
Remote subcommittee meetings, there's so few people.
Well, C and E can get quite a few, and it's hard to fit that many people in the SAU. But hopefully, in moving forward, we can start meeting in person. Go ahead, Brian, Superintendent Report.
Thank you. Sad news to start this evening. We received notification today that Chris Whitman, who is a teacher here at Goffstown High School, passed away. He had been fighting a long-term illness, and we were very sad to hear this. He leaves behind a wife and a young son, so it's truly a sad day for Goffstown High School. And we're very sorry for Chris's passing. I wanted to let the board know that I approved an $82,000 purchase using SER-1 grant funds for furniture. This furniture purchase is necessary for us to move forward in phases. And we did so under the board's emergency authorization. We've been looking at a furniture purchase for probably about two months now. And when we first started looking at furniture, the lead time was between three to five business days. And then a couple of weeks later, it was two weeks, and then a couple of weeks later, it was three weeks. We've seen a significant number of school districts that are all purchasing individual desks and furniture to allow kids to be back in school more. We had gone away from individual student desks over many years because we like more modular table-type arrangements that allow for collaboration, kids to be in small groups. But we did go through and make that purchase, and that was across all schools. I wanted to let you know that we posted the Mountain View Middle School Assistant Principal position. Josh Lewis has done a great job. He's been in that position in an interim capacity, and that is going through a full search process. I wanted to let you know that we've scheduled the SAU Board meeting. We're hoping that people will have availability. The date is Wednesday, was it Wednesday, Mrs. Moore? Thursday, Thursday, April 15th at 6:00 p.m. And because that's the full SAU Board and administration, that will be a remote meeting. We would have to be in a, in the gymnasium to have that many people. So I wanted to see if that date works for people. We did float that to our current SAU Board Chair as well. So we are looking forward to that meeting, and if anyone has a conflict, please let us know. We are looking at, Mr. Gross mentioned this, what we're calling SER-3. And at this point, we are anticipating, I think Scott is probably remiss of, of sharing the number, just probably being careful, but we're anticipating the next round of stimulus funding to be more than the last round. So we're waiting for the final language from the law, now that it's been signed by the president. And we'll be anticipating that there will be another significant amount of money coming into the Goffstown School District. I wanted to let you know that at the high school, the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee has continued to meet. Mrs. Barry and I have attended most of their meetings. I think we've had a couple of conflicts. And the board will recall that this went back several years ago. I issued a memo to Mr. McBride after we had kind of a racist incident occur here at the school, and there's been good work that has continued through that committee. I had a request, I think it was a good one, to provide a legislative update at the next meeting, so I'm happy to do that. There are an incredible number of bills that are being, that are going through the process. So I'll be happy to give kind of a more expansive update on that at our next meeting. I wanted to let you know that we have transition activities being planned and coordinated for Mountain View for both our incoming fifth-grade students from Bartlett and Maple, as well as our seventh-grade students from New Boston. We're in the process of talking about and planning a senior prom, as well as our graduation. The graduation will be at Fisher-Cat Stadium again, and there will indeed be fireworks. So we're very pleased, working forward to have those dates all set and to release them publicly.
What's the date on that graduation? The date of the graduation?
I think the date, we're looking at two different dates. I think it was June 8th is the, is the first date. And then we have a rain date, I think, is the 22nd. Because of the baseball schedule, there's a little bit of a, a bigger window between those two dates than I may be comfortable with, but that was the best we could get because the Fisher-Cats are playing, and they have a number of other events as well. I think I'll release that date, June 10th. Mrs. McCann just texted me. You can always count on Mrs. McCann. June, June 10th. So thank you, Kim. And I apologize that I gave the wrong date. And I, I think the 22nd was right, otherwise she would have corrected me on that as well. We have talked about the Building Committee, and we'll be looking forward to getting that committee back moving forward in the April timeframe, as well as the Stipend Committee. And in May, Mrs. Barry is working on a presentation to answer the question, how are our students doing, and how do we know? And she's been plugging away, working on a number of formal and informal data points to be ready to present to the board. And you've heard me talk about this already, but we're continuing to work on a remediation supports for all students next year because we recognize that a lot of students have lost ground, and we want to provide opportunities for them to have some individualized and small-group remedial supports outside of the regular school day. Speaking of school funding, there have been a number of meetings that have occurred with the School Funding Commission. And there's one left, which is on Thursday, March 25th, if you're interested in participating in, in that. It's at 5:30 p.m., and it is a Zoom-type meeting. Our kindergarten process is online this year. This is new for us, so we've opened up the Power School Portal, and parents are able to register online, submit their documents, the supporting documentation. And right now, the registrations are robust and ahead of last year. So likely, that means continued strong enrollment at Glen Lake School. And I think I've mentioned to you, but this is something that I need to keep on the board's radar. We've had a number of requests for foreign exchange students next year, so that's something that we'll want to discuss and make a decision. I think April, maybe May at the latest, but people are planning, and they need to make coordinations with the agencies that they're working with. And state assessment planning is in full swing. Mrs. Barry and her team are getting ready to do the state assessment. And at this point, we are anticipating, or we're hoping, that there will be a waiver in the 95% participation threshold. The New Hampshire Department of Ed has submitted that in their waiver request to Washington, and we will anticipate that that will be approved, and that's certainly something that we would support. And with that, I'm going to move right into my COVID updates.
Well, I saw it before you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jared.
Just a question of Superintendent Bulkey. We talked about the Glen Lake kindergarten enrollment portal. Does that include preschool and the, the preschool enrollment?
At this point, it's, yeah, at this point, it's just kindergarten. This is a brand-new process for us, and I'll talk a little bit about the role model students at this point. We have not had any. And mainly, that has to do with class sizes, the number of students. And you can imagine certainly that when we take in role model students for our preschool program, the three-year-olds are still an awful lot of work, so we've really tried to minimize. We're hoping, and I'll, I'll get to this a little later in the presentation.
Is that for this year or for next school year? I thought it was for next school year.
The portal is for next year. We have not opened it up for preschool.
Okay, that includes planning for next year.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
And maybe before you move, oh, go ahead, Ellen.
Okay, yeah, go ahead. You had mentioned Building Committee getting back up. I've been thinking about this and following our enrollments so far. And I did ask why do the numbers look like they came down, but it has to do with the pandemic and that kind of stuff. I don't know what we're looking at, if we're going to have a full board discussion on it or not. But we might want to consider possibly some revisions to its purpose.
We, Mr. Gross and I agree.
And I don't, I, I don't know if I was talking to Scott or Jared this evening, I'm not sure. But it seems to be a little bit of a different something that we need to be looking at with regard to our space needs or facility conditions or whatever. So is that something going to be a full board discussion, or do you want to pull a few of us, like Jared's on it and I'm on it, together to, to sort of weed out where we think we need to be going?
Yeah, I would recommend that we do the committee assignments first, and then we would have probably a full, just full board discussion about that. And Ellen, what we're going to likely recommend is, we believe that we're going to have some flexibility with this next round of SER money. And we think that there could be a fair number of CIP-type projects that we will want to consider that could potentially be funded using the next round of stimulus money. So I think the committee is going to need to look kind of more short-term, and then continue to look at the long-range planning, the long-range projection. And again, as we know, there continues to be no building aid in the state of New Hampshire. But yes, we will be circling back, and I think we need to think more kind of short-term and long-term concurrently.
I totally agree. And I want to remind us that, once we have our building, many assignments and all, we as a board wanted to start the discussion with Budget Committee and put the word in their ear about a possible reserve fund for school building, for whatever it is, extension, renovation, whatever, that we wanted to start that discussion with them and get feedback and that kind of thing. Because Budget Committee doesn't meet in the summer, right?
No, they don't, and they haven't really met since November either.
Yeah, and then we get straight into the fall budgeting. So if we can start those discussions before the summer, I would think it would be better. Is there any thought, Brian, being given to possibly offering a summer program to students who have simply not either regressed or not made the expected progress in their academics?
In fact, we are, and that is being planned as we speak.
Thank you.
So we'll have more to come on that. We've been busy working on our typical traditional special education extended school year program, as well as our Title I program. We're looking at some remedial support programs, as well as some enrichment-type things that I think we'll have.
And they don't need to be identified children, just.
Correct, correct, and at no cost to anyone. So even some of the enrichment programs that we're looking at this year, we would be proposing to use some of our SER money to provide some of those enrichment activities for kids this summer.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen.
Any other questions before I get into the COVID numbers?
I just want to confirm that June, not June, April 15th was good for everyone for the SAU, so that they can plan. Does that, that doesn't work for you, Jared?
Not, yeah, but I'm only one individual.
Is there anyone else that it doesn't work for?
I'm okay.
Is that the day of the week for you, Jared? Thursday, Thursday's bad again.
When you said Wednesday, I was excited, but it's not about me.
Dan?
Is, Heather?
Yeah, go ahead, Dan.
As long as there's a call-in phone, I may be, I'll talk to you offline for my schedule in April.
Okay. All right, sounds good. Wednesday is usually New Boston Board, that's why.
Yeah, so that, the, the month of April, New Boston's meeting schedule is a little different. So the week of your meeting is Monday, Monday you have your meeting, and then New Boston is on the same week schedule for the month of April only. So that's why we targeted that week of the 15th, because there were no meetings.
That's right, seven or six?
Tentatively at six. But again, we're open to the direction that the board would like to take.
But Tuesday.
Just trying to find common ground is always, always a challenge with that many people. Okay.
All right, so go ahead, Brian.
So let me provide a few updates on, on the state of COVID, and then I'll get into our recommendations. First thing, I'm very excited to share with the board that we have been diligently planning for several months and working in collaboration with the Manchester Public Health Department. And we have our vaccine clinic, which is this Wednesday between 3:00 and 8:00 p.m. We are anticipating vaccinating approximately 500 people. And we will then have our second round of vaccinations, which will occur on April 16th. Mrs. Barry, she's nodding her head, so I got that date right. So that is four weeks after. And that will mean that upon return from April vacation, our teacher. our teachers, all of our staff that have chosen to participate in the vaccine program will be two weeks clear from their second dose of the Moderna vaccine, and we're all very excited. I'd like to give a tremendous amount of appreciation to our two fire chiefs, Chief Allard and Chief McDonald, who have been through the planning process with us from the beginning. Mrs. Barry and I have been at this for a long time now. We've worked really closely with our nurses. MC actually had the chance to go on last Friday to see the clinic in Manchester and came back with some good recommendations. We have a final planning meeting tomorrow morning. We are ready to go, and we couldn't be more thrilled. So for all of us that have been working in schools and in and out of schools throughout the entire school year, this is just a tremendous relief that at this point, we will have one last thing to start to worry about. So we're very, very pleased.
Brian, is this happening at each school?
No, it's happening here at Goffstown High School. And we're beginning, so we're starting at 3:00. This, the high school dismisses at 2:41. We have the first window, the first hour of the clinic is primarily reserved for high school teachers so that we can get high school teachers in and out while the school is dismissing, get all the buses off campus, get all the student drivers off campus before we have the influx of people. So we're anticipating, I think it'll be a great day. We're really excited. And I do understand that it is, it's a holiday, isn't it, Mrs. Barry? I think people are mentioning that it is St. Patrick's Day. So I can't imagine a better way to celebrate it than being able to get your first COVID shot. So I'm very pleased about that.
Is this going to be a drive-through like they're doing at Loudon?
Nope, not a drive-through. They're all going to come into the building. We have it all, we got it all figured out. We got it all taken care of.
Brian, I just, I want to mention that it is, it's a reserved clinic. So it's not a walk-in clinic, maybe it's only for staff who have already registered.
Yes, I wouldn't want anyone to think that this is a walk-in clinic. You have to have a, you have to be registered, you have to have paperwork filled out, you have to have a time slot. It's, and it's all been taken care of. So this is not open to the general public, but this is part of the 2A next phase of the vaccine rollout. Thank you, MC. I wanted to let everyone know that I had a very productive, very successful meeting with our two unions last week, and we met with them after the board approved putting them on notice of our intent to move phases. I couldn't be more proud that our teachers, our support staff, they're on board, they were supportive. It was a very productive meeting, and I'm very appreciative. I did hear that there's been some dialogue about us changing our fully remote option. I wanted to let everyone know that that is not factually correct. People who are putting misinformation out, I apologize. I would encourage people who have questions, so please call their school principal if they have questions, and please don't get your information from Facebook. So I did want to let people know that. The cases are trending, continuing to trend in the right direction. New cases in New Hampshire, 155 per 100,000. This is the lowest it's been in a long time, so we're exceptionally pleased to see that. Hillsborough County, 145. Goffstown is at 243 per 100,000 with 44 current cases. New Boston is at 104 with six current cases. Testing positivity rating continues to fall, 3.4%. And this is a new piece that I'm including in your report, which is the state of New Hampshire percentage of fully vaccinated, which this afternoon was at 10.7%. So we do hope to see that number just continue to climb, and certainly that'll help with all elements of the pandemic. So the board is familiar with seeing this. First, we look at the level of community transmission. The percentage of positive PCR tests is below 5%, which would be in the minimal category. But the number of new infections per 100,000 continues to be in the red, in the substantial impact zone. We take the highest of those two. We then look at the school level. We have identified the transmission within the school facility as being in the medium, in the yellow category. At this point, we've had almost 200 positive cases in our schools, which is an incredible amount of work for your administrators, your school nurses, to do all the contact tracing and to work with all those families. Our absenteeism continues to be a non-factor, a non-issue. Our staff capacity, I have changed from critical to strained. When I show you, I think we're trending in the right direction. I'll show you the staffing charts below. And as we know, space continues to be a major factor. Glen Lake, space is strained. Bartlett and Maple, it is critical. Mountain View, it is strained, and the high school is at the normal or green phase. New Boston also is in the red. So according to the New Hampshire Bureau of Infectious Disease Control Model, we take the highest of the two factors for community transmission, which is in the red, substantial, and we look at the yellow of school impact, and that would put us in a hybrid model. But I want to share that we, at many points in time, should have been in remote according to this. So there's, this is not a flawless model. So let me talk about absenteeism and our ability to staff our buildings. You can see here, we're looking at the delta between the gray line and the orange line as we have throughout the pandemic. And at this point, we're at a 93% fill rate for professional staff. That is really good and really high and a little misleading, and let me say why. Many of these positions that we are filling are coming from our support staff. So when I show you our support staff, we have a much bigger gap between the orange line and the gray line with only a 48% fill rate. So as we increase students' time on campus, this will be the factor that we will struggle with the most. So I do want to be clear, as I have throughout this entire pandemic, staffing is and will continue to be the most significant limiting variable for us in the school district. We're not seeing the evidence of school-based spread. We're not seeing the school-based transmission. We've not had any children, in fact, any adults. But staffing will continue to be problematic for us. So I do want to make sure the board continues to see that delta between the orange and the gray line.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, Ellen.
You see, our parents are filling, which I totally understand. But is it still the case that most, if not all, if not most of our parents are one-on-ones? So that these adults are being taken away from, and so those children don't have their required one-on-one services?
No. And in fact, it could be that those are days kids aren't in school on site. But I would also just remind the board that through our Priority Return Program, we've had a lot of students who have been four days a week for months and months and months. So the numbers are kind of hard to track in that respect. But this delta for our support staff will continue to be concerning for us. New Boston is faring a little better. You can see that they had 100% fill, granted it's smaller numbers, and similar concerns, but not as big, between the orange line and the gray line. So New Boston is struggling with this as well. So with that, I'd like to go into our recommendation. And I'm going to make this as large as I can, and I'm going to read this so that people at home, if they're not able to see this on GTV, that I'll go through these dates. And Mr. Cludier, I emailed all of these documents to you, so you had, you have copies of these as well. And I'm sorry, Dan.
Thank you very much. I'm looking at them now. This is great.
Great, I should have mentioned earlier.
Well, having the information.
Thank you. So this evening, what I'm giving for a recommendation will be a staggered approach to moving towards five days a week for students. So let me go through these piece by piece. So the first was, March 1st, the school board voted to notify the two unions of our intent to move phases. That occurred on March 11th, and as I said, was a very productive, positive meeting. This Friday, March 19th, we will begin Friday sessions at Glen Lake School. And on March 29th, we will have kindergarten and first grade all in. So anybody who is in the current hybrid model will be attending school at Maple Ave, at Glen Lake in kindergarten, and Bartlett in first grade, fully in. A week later, we would add second grade to Maple and Bartlett, and fifth and sixth grade, fully in. New Boston at this point will be going back Monday through Thursday, with Friday remaining a remote day in New Boston, but all grades on April 5th for New Boston. The next week, on April 12th, third grade would be fully in at Bartlett and Maple. And then finally, a week later, fourth grade would be fully in at Bartlett and Maple, and seventh and eighth grade would be fully in at Mountain View. Now let me talk about the high school, and then I'll go back, and we can kind of slow down and talk about this further. What we're recommending for the high school, and I do want to explain, give a little bit of a justification, a rationale. We are recommending the high school to continue with the current hybrid model for the remainder of the school year, but we are looking to add Fridays for all students beginning on May 7th. And we will provide, that is for five consecutive Fridays, until we get to the end of the school year and final exams at the high school. So this will be what we anticipate to be a trial run of what the fall will look like. So we would like to have those five days with all students in, and we would provide an option to any hybrid students who were uncomfortable in coming to school on those Fridays. So again, the high school, the biggest factor for us is we had 80 high school parents inform us that if we went to full-time, back in, five days a week, all students, that we had 80 students who were going to move to remote from the current hybrid model. We do not have the staffing to be able to absorb 80 students going fully remote at the high school at this point in time of the school year. This would mean completely redoing the entire master schedule. This would mean disrupting classrooms. This would be pulling teacher assignments. This would be, we would likely have to potentially discontinue some elective classes. This would be incredibly challenging for us to be able to accomplish. And it would be, I would say, catastrophically disruptive at the high school. So I think public comment this evening affirms this. I have heard from a lot of high school parents that have said, Brian, please leave it like it is. So I wanted everyone to know that, first of all, we listen, we have always listened, and that at this point, given the number of people that indicated their preference to go fully remote, that we would not make that recommendation to go all in at the high school because we cannot absorb 80 more students in our online academy. So that's the, that's essentially the high-level overview. I would say no changes for remote students, as I indicated before. So we're going to be able to continue the existing remote model for all families who want to continue to keep it. And at this point, we are not recommending role model students at Glen Lake. We would hope to evaluate four-year-olds at a later point this year. Students who were with us last year, who Mrs. Stoye might be able to absorb in. And then probably, we would be looking at three-year-olds for next year. And really, that just has to do with, three-year-olds are a lot of work. A lot of times, three-year-olds are not potty-trained, so just the ability for our staff to be able to take more kids than we already have with the space constraints is just really concerning to us. So that's the overview. I will share with the board that the unions have seen this timeline. I reviewed this timeline with them. They were comfortable with this. All of our schools have been working diligently on their reopening plans with their reopening committees. I did ask Mrs. Pischka to be here if there were any questions because our elementary schools have the largest challenges with space. So I did ask Mrs. Pischka if the board had any questions, that she would be able to speak to it. But it's important for us to do a staggered approach at Maple and Bartlett simply because the changes in routines, these are young children, we need to re-acclimate them. We need to get those habits and routines down before we increase the number of kids. And some of this is still very much unknown. Arrival, dismissal, some of the challenges that we'll have with spacing, that this graduated time period will allow us to be successful. So at this point, this would be our recommendation, would be this timeline, and I'll just read it one more time for anyone at home who might not be able to see the screen. It would be this Friday, the 19th, Fridays begin at Glen Lake. March 29th, kindergarten, first grade, fully in. April 5th, second grade, fully in. Fifth and sixth, fully in. April 12th, third grade, fully in. April 19th, fourth grade, and seventh and eighth grade, fully in. And then after April vacation, for five consecutive Fridays, we would have all high school hybrid students attend for the last five Fridays before final exams at Goffstown High School. So with that, I will pause and ask for questions or anything that I can clarify.
I see Ellen's hand. Go ahead.
Okay. I don't get why this is spread out for five weeks coming back in. Why can't we bring first and second grade in, no, second and third grade in the same time we're bringing Glen Lake? I mean, why is second, third, fourth, and middle school not already coming in when Glen Lake is opening? I mean, why is this spread out like this? Acclimated, fine, getting used to the routine, I understand. And a lot of these children are going to have a lot of anxiety issues. But if we're going, bringing Glen Lake in, and it's starting on the night, let's say, the 19th, why can't we, at that same time, bring our first, second, third graders or first and second graders into Bartlett and Maple Avenue? And then the third and fourth graders the very next week? And why is it so spread out?
It's spread out to allow one grade level per week so that the school can adjust, get those routines established, and have a successful reintegration of all those kids.
I hear that, but Glen Lake is by itself. Why can't Maple Ave and Bartlett be opening the same week?
If I may, Ms. Chair.
Yeah, go ahead, Jared.
I think Glen Lake for March 19th is listed, is that they'd just be returning on Friday because they currently are not going to school Friday. But Glen Lake's not going full in until March 29th with the first graders going in at the same time, to be five days a week.
Oh, I see the question. Thank you, Jared. I didn't follow.
Yeah.
Okay, so why can't first and second grade at the other two schools start on the 29th?
Because we're recommending a one-grade level per week reintegration. It's more complicated than it may seem to have that many children attend in small classrooms, as we've talked repeatedly about the limitations of the class sizes at Maple Ave. That has to do with all the physical plants. So that has to do with our arrival, the amount of space we have for buses and parents dropping off, where those students are filtering in, where they're having lunch, where they're having recess.
Has that all been figured out, or are they still working on that?
I might ask Mrs. Pischka if I could trouble you to come and maybe give a little more detail, but that's our recommendation. And fifth and sixth grade going in one group was the recommendation of the middle school, followed by seventh and eighth, so to do it in two different groupings.
So while we're waiting for Suzanne, Ginny has.
Brian, is all of our furniture in? You said you had a difficult time ordering it.
So the furniture is not in. That's also part, thank you, Ginny, for asking that question. Part of the limitation that we have is we're expecting orders staggered at different points in time, and the anticipated furniture timelines are factored into this. I appreciate, I should have mentioned that as well.
And also, busing, are we going to need to increase busing?
We're not going to increase busing, but students will be in closer proximity on the buses. So in Goffstown, I think we're going to be in okay shape. Mr. Gross has been working with the bus company. They have the timeline, so they know what the increases in the runs will look like. Suzanne, do you want to speak to?
Hang on, just one second, just Jared, because it may go with a question for Suzanne.
Okay. I just, I have a question for this plan that you have listed out, Brian. If this was approved, what would be the reversal or unimplementation of this? Would it be, once we start implementing, if there is a hiccup, it is go full remote? Or are we going to regress back into a hybrid model?
We would regress back to our current model. That would be my hope, Jared. I think we, anything that we build, we have to have the ability to regress. So throughout the, throughout the entire school year, our schools planned on the possibility of going fully remote, which we never had to do with the exception of the short duration that we have the cluster at Glen Lake and the cluster at Bartlett. So we actually never had to implement that plan in all the other schools. But yes, we would have to have, because at this point, what we don't know is if we'll see another surge. We know that there are at least four dominant variant strands that are circulating. The UK version, the Brazilian, and the South African, and now there's this fourth that they're calling the California strain. So we don't know what impact those potentially have. So this is our hope. I think certainly the numbers are trending in a way that I think that this will be successful, but we do have to have the contingency planning, that if we had cases spike, if we had clusters, if we had school-based transmission, or, as I've mentioned a number of times, if we don't have sufficient staffing to be able to implement this model, it certainly would be the last thing I would want to have happen, but we could regress as a function of that. So it wouldn't be all-in or fully remote, I would think that we would have the ability to go back to Phase 2. And remember, the fundamental design of our hybrid model was in three different points. So one was a 25% capacity, one was a 50% capacity, and one was a 75% capacity. So we could move within the hybrid from Phase 3 back to Phase 2, back to Phase 1, which we never had to do.
Thank you, Jared. Hi, Mrs. Pischka.
Hi, good evening. I'm happy to share what the elementary administrative team has talked about, along with the other professional staff. And I would say, the elements that we considered when we first started the reopening process is something that we also had to reconsider now as well. So opening fully with a gradual increase in our population, one grade each week, will provide the two elementary schools with the opportunity to try solutions for some of our identified obstacles, and then make the necessary changes. So for Maple Avenue, for instance, every week we'll add 50 students to get to our total number, population. So that's significant when we think about what it looks like. So space needs are an issue, movement for one, but also how it makes our staff and our students feel when the space gets smaller. So our number-one focus is our students' well-being and adjustment to yet another change. So most of our students will likely adjust to the five days a week in school. However, there will be many that will need attention and support regarding the increase in students in their room, the close proximity to classmates, the lack of personal space in their classrooms, the buses, and the waiting areas within our school. So we ask that the board consider the proposed schedule as is, so we can continue to move along safely.
Thank you. Go ahead, Jared.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. At the elementary school level, how would lunching occur for those students? Are they going to be going to a centralized cafeteria, or would hot lunches be brought into the classroom?
Will continue in the classroom, and I'll just show you, I don't know if you'll all be able to see this, but, so this is our current map of a typical classroom. 12 students at the six-foot tables, one at each end, and they've been able to eat in the classroom because they're six feet apart, they don't speak during their times that their masks are off, and it's, you know, efficient. This is what it will look like when we're back full in a typical classroom. So they're three feet apart, we will have to have children sit in different places in the room in order for them to be far enough away to eat their lunch. That will be an adjustment for the kids and the people who supervise, the adults who supervise these classrooms. So we are working on what that looks like, what it will feel like in a classroom, when, you know, we used to be able to easily serve them right at their seats and, you know, not worry about keeping adults away from students in adequate six-foot distance.
Thank you.
I think we really can't underestimate how significant the space limitations are at these schools. So when I hear other superintendents talk about that they're able to have their elementary schools fully open, and I talk to them about their class sizes, and they say, "Well, we have, you know, 15 to 17 students in an elementary classroom." Okay. We have over 20, 22, 24, sometimes 25 students. They talk about class sizes. They have 900 to 1100 square-foot classrooms. We have 650. So to do this in one swoop, we do feel that we would potentially be setting ourselves up for failure. We do not want to go forward only to go backwards, and that we are recommending this purposeful, methodical, phased-in, to allow everyone to acclimate, to work out the kinks, and to do this in a thoughtful, safe way.
So, does anybody have a question for Mrs. Pischka? Go ahead, Ellen.
I'm probably in the minority, but this is taking way too long to get our kids back to where we know they need to be, in school, full-time. This is five weeks, and the kids are still going to be coming in and out with the current model. I'll be voting no on this, and I appreciate all the work that's gone into it, but it doesn't make any sense to me why 1st and 2nd grade can't go in at the same time, 3rd and 4th grade in at the same time, we're bringing two grades in at the middle school at the same time. I just, I understand, I think there's going to be a lot of issues for these children coming back. I really do. I think the anxiety and emotional, social-emotional issues, I think, on a lot of children are going to, I hope I'm wrong, I hope I'm wrong, but I think they're going to need a lot of help. But this is taking into the middle of April, then we go out on break, and then we're in five or six more weeks, we're out for the summer. So I just feel that it's just taking too long, the numbers are there, things are looking good, and all the statistics nationwide have said that the safest place for kids is in school, not at home. So I will be voting no on this, just because it's taking too long to get our kids back where I believe they need to be. That's just me.
Thank you, Ellen. Dan, did you have something?
Yep, I had several questions.
Go ahead.
And one of them, if I can remember, is to try to get back to ask Ellen a question when I'm done. From what I have heard, the, what we are considering, the experts in the field, from the Health Department and things, and the social whatever, it's saying, more so than not, the younger kids would benefit for being in school. Is that an accurate statement, and are you using that for your basis for giving us the schedule, to bring the kids back in?
Yes, so the primary focus was to start with our youngest primary learners, and to get them in school as quickly as we could.
And did you find information from the same type of sources that were looking at everything else, that indicates that the kids should be in school rather than not?
Well, as I shared previously, according to the Bureau of Infectious Disease model that we were given, our students should be, continue to be in a hybrid model. So we're actually, I would argue, a little more aggressive than the recommended model by the Bureau of Infectious Disease Control. And it's important to know that I had asked the schools to convene their reopening teams and start working on this, and this was a plan that was important at the building level. This had buy-in from teachers, this had buy-in from support staff, to do this purposely and methodically, and to set us up for the greatest likelihood of success. So do I think kids need to be in school? I do. And that's why we never closed from Thanksgiving until the end of January, like almost every other school district. The only one that didn't was Bedford. And they have big, beautiful, huge classrooms with incredible ventilation. So I do recommend this time period. We did discuss a more aggressive approach to this, and this was important at the building level for the reopening teams, that they wanted to have the ability to focus on our primary-age children, to get them back as quickly as we can. But again, to do it by establishing good routines, ensuring the safety of everyone involved, and recognizing that it's impossible to please everyone. It's impossible. So this has been our best approach, and again, I continue to emphasize, the limitations of having old elementary schools that are small and overcrowded is a significant restriction, and likely, when we, if we struggle implementing this, it will be because of class sizes. And to put 25 kids, you know, all in one swoop, in every classroom at Maple Ave, that's 650 square feet, I think would be irresponsible.
If I may, there was also, I believe it was the meeting on February 15th, where we had the administration, Dan, provide us the empirical research that was provided from multiple sources within the United States and even other countries about the effects of children and with the COVID vaccines, I'm sorry, the COVID strains that were presented during that meeting as well. I wasn't sure if you were there, but we had probably a good hour-long discussion researching those empirical evidence, the empirical data from those surveys were presented during that board meeting as well.
And now I have three questions. What did the results tell us? That's one of the last three.
Yeah, from the surveys that were provided, I'm paraphrasing, there was no statistical significance of being between three feet or six feet for kids that were less than, I believe it was, it was a younger age, I can't remember the actual date that was provided.
Sure. Now, the last question for Brian, I guess, is, how, if this goes into effect, how does it affect the teachers currently who are teaching, I would presume, in a hybrid state? Or are they?
So what this would impact, when we start to move forward with more kids in, it wouldn't impact the teachers that are currently teaching hybrid at the elementary level, and we have remote teachers, they would stay remote, they would continue their current remote program. We do have some teachers at Mountain View in 7th and 8th grade that teach hybrid and remote. We are working with Mrs. Kohler on some potential solutions, but that continues to be one of the challenges that we face, and that was also part of the rationale for having 7th and 8th grades start at a staggered time after 5th and 6th. We still don't have that completely worked out.
Okay. And my last question is kind of like for Ellen. She had mentioned she would not vote for this, and I'm curious to find out, is it because she doesn't like the timeline, or she doesn't want the elementary kids in school? Because no matter whether the timeline is enacted or not, the elementary kids would be in school if this was favorably voted upon.
I think the kids need to be back in school full-time as soon as possible, and I totally support opening our schools fully, and can greatly appreciate the issues that will arise for our kids and our staff. I just object to it, one grade at a time. We're doing 4, 5, 6, we're doing 7, 8. High schools staying put. I don't quite grasp why we can't do 1st and 2nd grade, or maybe 1st and 3rd grade, because I don't think they're in the same area of the building, but I could be wrong.
Okay, so.
And 2nd and 4th, and just get them in there sooner rather than four weeks, five weeks out.
So what I would like you to consider is a vote no, if it's a split board, will not bring the kids back in. I'd like you to consider that while we continue to chat about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Anyone else have any questions? Go ahead, Reta.
I don't think it's so much a question, or maybe I just want to make sure I understand this correctly. I mean, I think we all agree we want to get the school kids back into school, it's how we go about doing it. And what's being presented is not based on what's happening with COVID around the country, it's what's happening in our school district, and how we can go about doing that. So we have desk issues, we've got, you know, drop, pickup and drop-off, and the whole transition. And I guess I'm wondering, you know, to Ellen's point, especially at the elementary school, because we have you here, you know, how the decision was made, and what were some of the factors that you had to consider in when to bring in the 1st grade, when to bring in the 2nd grade?
Well, as Brian already mentioned, we wanted to start with our earliest grades first. Another consideration that I didn't mention, but I'll mention it now, is our high-stakes testing, our high-stakes testing is happening at this time. And our hope is that we can have 3rd and 4th grade complete the testing in the hybrid model, then to add the entire class, and then try to test them. So our, we just started today, and we will end April, the week just before the 19th, April 16th will be our last day with our 3rd and 4th grade students. And then in the month of May, we'll be working with our connected learning students, and that will take another two and a half weeks to have them come in, they need to test in person. But we can keep them in a small group and socially distant in our library. But right now, our 3rd and 4th grade are testing with their 10 to 12 students that they've been with all year, to add an entire class into those 3rd and 4th grade, and then ask them to complete these difficult assessments, would, I think, be asking a lot, and I don't think our results would be as good.
Are you good, Reta?
Yep.
Any other questions, comments?
I do have a question with the high school. What are the options you're thinking if the hybrid kid doesn't want to come in on Fridays? Would they still do Zoom classes all day, or have you thought of that, or figured it out?
We haven't yet, so that's something that the high school leadership will have to work with teachers and come up with. And really, that option for students who were not comfortable coming in is something that I asked them to consider. So we have not figured that out at this point, but we will.
Yep.
You know, and much like a lot of what we've contended with over the last year, we do the best we can with the information and the resources that we have, and sometimes there are things that we know we need to figure out in another week or two, and we don't have the answers now, but we will by the time we need the answer.
And I do like to mention, high schools had a petition started by a student who wanted Fridays to not be Zoom and to be in school. So that went around and was signed by quite a few, so this kind of added to that as well. So all the nuts and bolts are still trying to be figured out with, with the middle school and elementary school, and you'll let parents know if we prove as soon as possible?
Yeah, we would notify parents tomorrow.
Okay. Jared, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to recommend, or to, to a phase change as recommended by the superintendent, as presented at the board tonight.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
By Terry.
I can second that, if you'd like, if you haven't got one yet.
I have one, thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Any other discussion before I do roll call? Go ahead, Reta.
I just have a quick question. With the Friday, are those going to be 30-minute classes in the high school?
No, they're going to change the model slightly, so we'll let everyone know. I think it's going to be a rotating, we have a two-day rotation, I think they're going to rotate the days.
And just?
We don't want that many movements.
Okay.
Yeah, we're trying to limit the amount of times kids are changing classes.
And just in regard, this is more just a comment in regard to, you know, the people that are going to be remote on Friday. Higher Ed is dealing with this, and they call it the high flex option, so you can look into that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Reta. Go ahead, Ellen.
So the options are that a child comes in when their grade level is open, if that's where the board goes, or they're full remote.
Correct.
Those are the two, okay. And I do want to say, I fully appreciate everybody's effort on this. You know about why I'm voting, I think it needs to be sooner rather than later, given the April break, and then we're out early in June, it just seems to be very cut-up and way too long for me, but that's just me.
And I would just reiterate that this plan is based on furniture that we don't physically have yet. So our ability to have a desk for a 3rd grader or a 4th grader, these are furniture orders that we don't have. So we, again, $82,000 worth of furniture that we purchased, needs to be procured, it needs to be built, it needs to be put on-site, it needs to be moved to cloud. needs to be built, it needs to be put on site, it needs to be moved to classrooms. It's going to take us, it's going to take us time. So I appreciate that Ellen would like to see kids in school more quickly. I would as well, but I think that this is a solid plan.
All right, so we have, oh, go ahead, Ginny.
Is this phasing in process also going to help get your staff in place, where the staff is kind of all over the place now, filling in needs?
So when I, yeah, Ginny, so when I talked about that right now, we have a 48% fill rate for our support staff. If we hypothetically fully reopened Maple Ave, I would all but guarantee I would not be able to staff that school. So by doing it in a staggered approach, we're hoping that conditions will continue to improve. We're hoping that we might see some additional substitute teachers that might have availability to cover for our professional staff as well as our support staff, but yes, thank you.
All right, so I have a motion, I have a second. We've discussed a lot. Anybody else before I do roll call? All right, seeing none, I will do roll call. Terry?
Yes.
Reta?
Yes.
Ellen?
No.
Dan?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. So motion passed. Thank you. Thank you, Suzanne, for coming and talking. Thank you, Brian, and all our staff.
Indeed. Thank you, Mrs. Pischka.
All right, so the next is the draft calendar.
So the status update on the calendar, we presented this calendar to the board what feels like many, many months ago. We had been patiently waiting for the Manchester School District to approve their calendar, because as the board knows, we have students who attend the Manchester School of Technology. There is one change that I will bring to the board's attention, and that is April, February vacation. We originally had identified the week of February 21st as February vacation, and we have changed that. The majority of New Hampshire school districts changed to be off-cycle from Massachusetts. So we found out later that Massachusetts will be on vacation the week of February 21, and Manchester and most New Hampshire school districts moved into that last day of February into the first week of March, which is really pretty late, but we think it makes good sense to stay aligned with the Manchester School District. So this continues to be 180-day calendar. This has us starting school on the 31st of August with two teacher workshops prior, and this would get us out on June 14th with no snow days. So this reinstated Martin Luther King Day as a holiday in January on the 17th, and apart from that, it's exactly what you have already seen. So we do need to submit our calendar by April 1st, so my hope would be that the board would be able to approve the school calendar this evening.
Anybody have questions, comments? Go ahead, Ellen.
We're not doing President's Day, but we are doing Martin Luther King Day.
We've never done President's Day.
Well, a long time ago we did.
Oh, no.
It's okay. Okay.
Anyone else? All right, so we need to, if everybody's good with what you see, we need a motion to.
Make a motion to accept the draft calendar for 2021-22 school year as submitted.
Thank you, Ginny. Do I have a second? By Reta. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, I'll do roll call. Terry?
Yes.
Reta?
Yes.
Ellen?
No.
Dan?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. Motion passed. All right, next on the agenda, new business, election results discussion. Brian, respond.
Yeah, this would just be if the board had any appetite in discussing the election last week, so if we would have had, one of our warrant articles would have been voted down or anything of that nature. So you may not have anything, but we put that on the agenda in case the board wanted to talk about the election results. But I'll move on to filling the vacancy.
I would just like to thank the voters for approving both of our items that we had out, both our contract and warrant article, excuse me, and our budget.
Right.
That was awesome.
Yeah, agreed. Turnout was really pretty low, ended up being just over 1,500 voters out of a community of well over 18,000. So it was a small percentage that voted, but I would concur, we're very appreciative.
Right. All right, proposal to fill board member vacancy.
So this would be the process to replace Mr. Stetson on the board. If the board is in agreement, we have a press release ready to be released tomorrow, and we would be asking for interested parties to submit a letter of interest and resume no later than Friday, March 26th at 4:30 PM. And we would send this out, as I did last time, so we would do the press release, we would put it in the newspaper, and I would send a notification to all Goffstown parents as well. So this would be the exact same process we went through when Susanna resigned from the board. So if the board is good with that process, as well as the timeline, we have that ready to go. If you'd like to make any changes, let us know.
So April 5th, we would start interviewing?
So we would look at, let me just look at the calendar to make sure that that's the date.
Mm-hmm.
So if they're due to us on the 26th, then we would be ready to discuss at your next meeting, which would be on April 5th. And that evening, I would anticipate that we would invite interested people to come to the board meeting, and the board would likely make an appointment that evening.
Like we did last time.
Exactly.
Go ahead, Reta.
I just have a question, recalling the last time. I think we, as a board, had a difficult time on how to choose the final candidate, and I was just wondering if we could have a process in place for the next time around. So it, we just didn't know how to decide, so I think we could make it a little bit easier if we had that process in place upfront.
Yeah, we could think of something.
Like a rubric?
I think there's many different ways to do it, but none of us really had an idea of how to do it. There were a lot of close calls, and we kind of, you know, we made a choice in the end, but I think we weren't sure how to get to that choice, you know, like, take the top three, take, and then take the top, you know, then all of us vote on the top three.
Right.
A very good choice we made.
The process we used last time was we had kind of an interview sheet that had the questions already on them, and it allowed board members to rank and to quantify. So maybe we can, Reta, I'm sure you've got some good ideas, maybe you can, we can talk and see if we can come up with something.
Yeah, absolutely.
That might be more meaningful, but at least it allowed a methodology to quantify.
Right.
But again, there's a lot of subjectivity, you know, is someone a three, are they a four? You know, that's, a lot of that is up to the individual, even with a pretty good rubric. But anything we can do to support the board, we're happy to.
Is everybody okay with sending out to parents and the newspaper? Did you get a lot of hits from the newspaper?
No, we got none from the newspaper.
You sent it out to parents, so do we want to still do the newspaper or?
What newspaper did we do?
Yeah, union leader.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Dan, go ahead.
Board policy, EBB-E-dash regulation, R says, number one, the vacancy will be publicized in the local newspaper.
Okay.
Now, we can define what local newspaper is.
Right.
But that's one of our policies.
Okay, sounds good. Is everybody good with this, then? So we'll need a motion to move forward.
I just think that we might hit more people using the Business Connection, because it's given, it's actually delivered free to every single household, whereas the union leaders.
Right. That goes out with the press release? That goes out with the press release? Okay.
So just want to hit more people right here in Goffstown. I think that might be the way to go, is get a press release there, and I don't think there'd be a fee for it.
We include them when we send out all press releases.
Okay, thank you.
So they'll get this.
Plus, we're emailing all Goffstown families.
Yep.
Anything else? All right, so we need a motion.
For?
For having administration put an ad in the paper and to email families with the vacancy.
I move that we advertise the vacancy and inform all families. So that's, the only people get the email are school families.
Or any, how did you do it last time?
That's how we did it last time. We put it on social media, we put it in the newspaper, we sent out the press release, and we sent it to current families. We don't have a list of non-parents.
I'll move that we do a press release and send it out to social media and email the families.
All right, thank you, Ellen. Do I have a second? All right, Ginny, Scott, I saw your hand.
Yeah, I was just going to say that Dan is absolutely correct. It would just simply be to proceed with filling the vacancy per policy.
Right.
That's really what, the, all the other stuff is in the policy, and then the administration then just exercises that.
Right.
That's where.
So we have a motion, we have a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll do roll call. Terry?
Yes.
Reta?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. So motion passed. All right, building committee discussion?
Yeah, I think we might be a little premature on that.
Okay.
So if the board is in concurrence, we'll put that on the next agenda.
Okay, yep, that works. All right, BCA Ethics Policy, this is our annual signature for policy, BCA Ethics Policy Statement, the signed policy will be collected for the Gofftown School Board filed, held at the SAU. So you have the policy in front of you, so we need to sign it at the end of the night. Draft committee assignments, Denise sent out draft, the committees gave you who was on this past year, so you need to fill out your preference and get them to me as soon as possible so that I can do the committees to get everybody together. So you can email them, if you have them now, you can give them to me tonight, and I will try to.
We're giving them to you, Heather?
You can give them to me tonight if you have it filled out. If not, you can email it or call me or whatever. I do try to accommodate everybody's wishes, but if we have too many on one committee and not enough on the other, I may have to switch stuff around, so. Does anybody have any questions on it? And I know Jared is on budget, so we already got that. We will need an alternate for him. All right, moving on, we have board authorization request. A board motion is needed to grant continued authorization to the superintendent, under the superintendent's emergency operation plan for COVID-19 as a temporary regulation to policy EDCF, pandemic epidemic emergencies, and to grant the superintendent or his designee authorization to respond at his or her discretion to changing public health circumstances and to allow the superintendent the ability to modify or adapt school policy as needed until the next successful school board meeting.
So moved.
By Ellen, do I have a second? By Ginny, I'll do roll call. Terry?
Yes.
Reta?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. We're unanimous. The next one is a motion to grant the business administrator authorization to make payments out of sequence and to notify the board of such payments at the next scheduled school board meeting.
So moved.
By Ellen, do I have a second?
Second.
By Jared, I'll do a roll call. Terry?
Yes.
Reta?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. We're unanimous. So we now have school staffing.
So we have a few notifications. Leave of absences for Jennifer Berg and for Candace Dumont. Those are two Maple Ave staff members that will be through the end of the school year. We do have a, two long-term substitutes to replace those people. We have one in place already and one not in place, so that would be notifications only. For your approval, we're very sad that Haley Lawazo is resigning. She's been our technology integration specialist and has just been an incredible member of the IT department and working closely with all of our schools. She's a very special lady, and we're sad to lose her. So we will wish her well, but we would need her resignation accepted by the board.
All right, so I have a motion to accept her resignation by Ellen. Do I have a second? By Reta, I'll do roll call. Terry?
Yes.
Reta?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Dan?
Dan.
Okay.
Jared?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. So motion passed.
Next, we have our co-curricular sports nominations, and I'm hoping that you won't want me to read this entire list, but I'm happy to. So this includes all of our volunteers, and one thing I would just always point out to the board is just look at the number of volunteer coaches that we have who continue to support our student athletes, our athletic programs. At this point, this is the list. I think tennis, we're not sure if we're going to have enough student athletes to field a team. I think that may be the only one that we might need to reconsider. There are a number of new coaches on this list. I think, as always, Athletic Director Huff has done a great job building a great team, and we would bring these nominations for your approval.
So moved.
All right, Ellen, and do I have a second? By Terry, I'll do roll call. Terry?
Yes.
Reta?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. So motion passed. Brian, did you skip the administration nomination?
No, I'll do that next. So the next one I have is an administrator nomination. The board will recall that Todd LaValle had resigned last year, I think it was over the summer, and we appointed Callie Rosamack as the interim dean of students. Callie has done a spectacular job. She's worked really hard. We've been exceptionally proud of her, and we'd like to bring her for nomination for that position permanently. And we can talk about this in non-public if the board wanted to, but it's, everything is within budgeted parameters.
So moved.
By Ellen, do I have a second?
Do I have a second? Denise, do I need to make that statement or?
Inquiry.
Go ahead, Dan.
So accepting this accepts the provisions of the contract as well?
This would be just for her nomination. If the board would like to talk about the contract parameters, we can do that in non-public. I would say everything is well within budget.
I understand, but there are certain items in a contract that aren't budgeted money numbers, there are other parameters. So I'm just saying, if this would be a nomination, okay, but I believe the contracts all are going to come to us probably next month sometime?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and this would be one of them?
This would be one of them.
Excellent, thank you.
All right, so I have a motion, I have a second. Any further discussion? Does anybody want to go into non-public to discuss this? All right, seeing none, I'll do roll call. Terry?
Yes.
Reta?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. So motion passed.
We do not have any notifications of unpaid leave requests, so we don't need to do that. But we do have a request, and I know that Mr. Borget, Mr. Borget is still here this evening. I think the board can appreciate that we have continued to struggle with the staffing levels that we have in our IT department. And what we have for the board is a proposal this evening of increasing two new positions in the technology department that we would be using COVID funding for the first, at that we would be using COVID funding for the first, at least the first year of the positions. So this would allow us to bring, Steve, you want to come over to one of the microphones, please? This would allow us to, to hire these positions, have it be cost neutral, which would allow us the opportunity to go through the budget process for FY23 to include these positions in the budget. Essentially, in, in having Stephen here, he's the expert. But Stephen is looking for one district data position, data technician position. This position does not currently exist and we're looking for an individual with high computer literacy. This has to do with a lot of data entry for things like rostering. It has to do with creating Power School lists. There's many things that we've learned throughout the pandemic as we are much more reliant on technology and we just have not had the capacity to meet that need. And the second position is for a technician one, which is more of the nuts and bolts, IT, taking care of the network kinds of things. Stephen, let me, let me turn it over to you and if you could just talk about what you see as the need in your department and then these two positions a little more specifically, if you would please.
Sure. So the, the two areas of need that we have right now. The first one we'll talk about is the data technician. So every digital curriculum asset that we use, from kindergarten to the high school, goes through one person for building the rosters and getting them uploaded. So we have dozens of online platforms, everything from CSaw to the McGraw-Hill Wonders to the High School TCI, the Savvas Learning Science Platforms, and many others. And when a kid changes sections, they have to go through and rebuild the rosters and upload them. Now, a roster file is a collection of Excel spreadsheets linked together that gets sent off to the publisher so the child has access to those digital assets. We have one person who does all that. And unfortunately, if you have one person trying to manage 20, 30 digital platforms, timeliness is not always possible because some of these platforms can take two to three days to build an updated roster file, especially when you're building them by hand. So we've identified that that's one area that we really struggle is we just don't have the manpower or personnel power to be able to keep up with the demand that we have. This has been an ongoing issue for years. It's been exacerbated by COVID by being in hybrid and remote because now we have more online tools and the same one person who's responsible for trying to do it all. So that's our first area of need. The second area of need we have is just keeping up with the repairs and getting the hardware materials deployed. So in district right now in Goffstown, I have one technician one who covers three schools. I have one technician two who covers the middle school. And I have one network administrator who covers the high school. Each of those tech support people support a little over 1,000 users. The recommended ratio is under 250. So we're making do, we're keeping things running, but we're still deploying computers that were bought through Esar dollars and grant dollars that were purchased in July. We're still in the process of trying to get them out. We're making headway. We're down to about 100 of the almost 400 systems we purchased. But when you have five people lined up in your office who need tech support, those projects of deploying additional equipment, that gets put on hold, trying to address the immediate need. And we've been chugging away at it, but there's only so many hours in a day. And unfortunately, we just don't have the human resources to get through the backlog. That's kind of where we're struggling. And as you, as my network administrator and my technician two spend time dealing with the simpler issues, like the Prometheusan board isn't working because the adapter is bad or I need to get an app installed, some of the more complex backend work gets deferred and deferred. And, you know, we're making system changes. Some of these guys are working on Saturday, trying just to get the, the day-to-day maintenance done.
So these positions come with a salary that's in, in the range of around $33,390 for the data technician position and, and a total benefit cost of around $60,000. And the second one has about a 30-something thousand dollar estimate based on experience. Again, probably somewhere in the $60,000 range with all benefits. So in total, we're anticipating these two positions to be probably around 120, maybe a little over $1,000 for the two positions. And as I stated, I, I think these are positions that we've probably needed for the last 15 years. We have made do because we had Gary Girallaman and now we have Stephen Borget. Stephen works more hours than probably anyone, any of us know. He's here all the time. He's here on the weekends. He's constantly needing to tend to things. So this is something that I think is critically important to support the department and to support teaching and learning across the schools. And we would go through the process of proposing to the board to include these positions in the FY23 budget. And if the budget was unsuccessful or the board made cuts or the Budget Committee made cuts, we would have to live with that. But at this point, we would be able to pay for these using the current EsR2 funds that we have, approximately $1.2 million. And don't forget, we have the additional EsR3 funds that we think will be more than double. So we have sufficient funds to cover this and we would make the recommendation for both of these positions.
Thank you, Brian. Go ahead, Ginny.
I know I've been the end writer, you can probably agree. The presentations that you've given to CNE over the years, yourself this year and Gary. I did ask him if he would please come to the board and, and ask for some positions because the numbers that they speak of, where we have supports, the ratio where we have supporting the number of people as to businesses and the number of they have supporting people are just ridiculous, like this 1,000 to 200. And I really think that we need to help them more and get them more staff so that they can do their job more easily. And so that people can, we want people to get into technology and to use it more. They really need to have the support behind them to do it. And Stephen shouldn't be here night and day working. He should be working his time and then going home. And I think it's too much to ask for people to do that. So I really think that we need to add at least these two positions and remember at budget time that the ratios that we have are crazy.
Thank you, Ginny. Jared, did I see your hand?
I'll wait a little bit because I, I'm going to bring it from a Budget Committee perspective and some of the conversations that will occur, but I'll, I'll table mine for a moment.
Okay. Go ahead, Rheta.
Just to piggyback on what Ginny had said, I think, you know, COVID aside, everybody is more and more dependent on the technology. And at the same time, with the, the state laws requiring all this security, which should always be in place, but now it's mandated that, there's a lot of work that goes behind that. And with people bringing in their own devices, that it, it's just skyrocketed. And I know when that breaks down, business breaks down, the school, you know, being able to do the schoolwork. So I think it, it is a critical piece at schools.
Does anybody have any questions or comments for Stephen? If not, then if you're in a favor, we can do a motion to approve these two positions?
Oh, go ahead. I can ask my question now. So as this is being presented, this will be covered next fiscal year by grant release?
Correct.
And then when we go to budget for the following year, would that be part of our already existing budget? Or would that be considered new spends for our line items? Basically, it's going to be in the default?
It would be considered new spending.
Okay, for, for that?
Yes, so for FY23, these positions would not be part of the default budget. They would be new spending, so it would have to go through the entire budget process, be approved at the SAU level, go onto the school board, be approved by the school board, and then go to the Budget Committee for their consideration. And what we'll have to evaluate, we haven't started, obviously, working on FY, you know, 23. We will, Mr. Gross and I will, will start that work over the summer. And it could be that we recommend cuts to make up for some or part of this. But we'll have to see once we get into that budget process. But this would not, these would not be positions that would be included in the default budget for FY23.
No, and I thank you for articulating that because that has been a large conversation piece during the Budget Committee for the additional personnel that are grant funded for the fire station. And that is something that has come up every year. And I know that that's going to be a hard conversation when the grants run out for those at the Budget Committee. So I, it's glad that we're following that same process that we look at it. I, I agree that these are very important positions. You know, my role as a Governance Director at a defense contractor, IT is one of those items that we always have to be very mindful of and make sure that we don't fall down on. And as we have our vision in the future of less snow days and more Blizzard Bag days where we will be going remote, this is a need that we will have to have. So I'm glad we're having the foresight to include that. And Ginny, thank you for making sure that we do have technology come to these meetings to really express this. Really appreciate that.
Thank you, Jared. Anyone else? Have anything? So if we're good, does somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept these two positions at a expected total compensation of 120 K for the next fiscal year that will be grant funded.
Thank you, Jared. Do I have a second? By Ellen? Any further discussion?
Inquiry.
Yes, go ahead, Dan.
Jared's motion was for the next fiscal year. Do we have money to start the process now?
We, we do. We would go through the process of posting these positions, having the applicants come in. If, if it was possible, we would like to start them early. I just don't know, we don't know what the pool is going to look like or how soon we might be able to, to bring someone on. But Stephen needs help now.
Would Jared be amenable to modifying his motion to indicate rather than just next year, as soon as practicable? Or other words similar?
I accept your friendly amendment if my second agrees.
Thank you, Jared.
Thank you.
Ellen?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have the amended by Jared, seconded by Ellen. Any other discussion? All right, see you none. I'll do roll call. Terry?
Yes.
Rheta?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. Motion passed. Thank you, Stephen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Borget.
All right, is there other business that may legally come before the meeting? See you none. All right. We do have non-public tonight. Non-public session RSA 91-a, semicolon, 3, 2, A and C. A is dismissal, promotion or compensation of any public employee or the discipline of such employee or the investigation of any charges against him or her unless the employee affected, one, has a right to a meeting and, two, requests that the meeting be open, in which case the request shall be granted. And C, matters which, if discussed in public, would likely affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of the public body itself unless such person requests an open meeting. This exemption shall extend to any application for assistance or tax abatement or waiver of a fee, fine or other levy if based on inability to pay or poverty of the applicant. So I need a motion to go into non-public. By Ellen, do I have a second? Oh, Ginny, do you have a question?
No.
Are you seconding?
I seconded though.
Okay. All right, so I'll do roll call. Terry?
Yes.
Rheta?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. So we're in non-public.
We're staying here?
We're staying here, so we'll take a.